I hear my call to order this committee, the whole meeting is Monday, August 17th, 2020, and the time is 8:01. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Ms. Nwiler, Erin Stone.
Here remotely.
Thank you all. I seek a motion to approve the July 20th, 2020 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Minutes.
I move to approve the July 20th, 2020 Committee of the Whole and Executive.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, word members of the committee here will omit the minutes. Yaren has her hand raised. Thank you. Erin?
Yes, on page three at the top where it says, "One, elementary instructional models", the second sentence, it says classrooms were measured and can hold 20 students with social distancing. I wasn't sure if that was 20 people. Looking at the above, it was 16 to 18 students, sort of thinking two adults.
Yes, good correction. Thank you. And it should probably say approximately 20 because there are some classrooms that are a little bigger and a little smaller. Other amendments, omissions, corrections? Okay. Does every, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Yay. The motion carries by general consent. We will begin with the Facility Development Committee. I turn the meeting over. I will continue the meeting as FDC Chair until Ellen gets here. So let's start with the summer construction update.
Sure. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. I can provide a little update.
Remotely?
Next meeting. I will be at the next meeting in person. We can't go this long without donuts.
Go ahead, sorry.
So I'll keep it, I'll keep it short and sweet. It's all good news. High Crest Phase 3, which also entails a little bit of work in McKenzie and Ramona, and then we have Central and Harper. They're all in a similar situation in the fact that we're doing punch list type items in preparation of our final walkthrough with ROE, which is scheduled for Friday later this week. So it's just been amazing to see the transformation at all, at all the sites over the last couple of weeks. It's, it's exciting and we're looking to wrap it up this week. We have been accommodating staff returning over the last number of days. That's gone fairly well and it will be in much better shape towards the end of this week. From an allowance standpoint, we have unused balance of allowance remaining on all three sites, all three projects. High Crest Phase 3, as of our last meeting, we were sitting around $60,000 in unused allowance. Central, we were around $75,000 remaining, and then at Harper, $23,000. So collectively, we're tracking under budget, which is great, and we're on schedule. So.
Well, that's fabulous news, Joe. Thank you very much. We need some good news. Let me see if anybody has any questions for you.
I had a quick one. We always get into the, here's the proposal, here's the contingency, and then we talk about ease of all our contingency, whatever. How, not counting the contingency, are we like on budget or do we need some of the contingency but not all of it?
Right. So we, we carry within, within all of the projects, we carry a contingency to handle additional scope that the district may want to add during construction phase for whatever reason, and also to accommodate unforeseen conditions. So the values that, that I just referenced, that's the unused leftover portion at this point of those built-in contingencies. So when I say we're under budget, we're, we're under budget and without getting into other specifics.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Other question? Okay, can't wait to see everything, Joe.
Yeah. Yep. Little bit of, little bit of final cleaning. The second half of this week, we'll be ready for our walkthrough and we do not anticipate any surprises, especially with product delivery. We're, we weren't quite sure, given, given the world situation that we have, there's been some product delays on a couple of other projects of ours. And, you know, to date, we've had some minor delays but nothing significant and looks like we're going to make it here. So it's all good news.
Great job. Go ahead, Frank.
One of the things that makes sense for being able to have a lot of students.
Yeah, honestly, at this point, it's going to be more complicated than, okay.
All right.
We will arrange for that at some point in the school year, probably on the weekend. But, but at this point, it's going to be too complicated to have staff sporadically every day and throughout the weekend.
That doesn't understand.
Thank you. But other reminding thing is that we get school targets sometimes.
Hey Frank, I just wanted to note, you're a little muffled when you're not speaking loudly. So just for the, for the webcast maybe, if you can speak up, that'd be great. Thanks.
I'll speak louder.
Okay, so we're moving on to an update on mutual construction for heat 39.
Oh, I'll do it.
Great.
So, so really the updates as it relates to like, you know, that's potentially the summer of Ramona and 39, the administrative team has worked with SDR to continue to plan the design and layout of what those projects may look like. We are planning is to bring up preliminary design layout for something next month, show the world what SDR and Juggo and Glass, both of, the first part of both of those central projects are incorporated as they were previously into the fiscal year 21 budget. And, you know, because there's just so many layers to projects like this, you know, SDR is continuing to work behind these needs on things like zoning and socializing of sites or anything. Just because some of the lead times, you can be quite long. So that's kind of where we're at and we'll have a lot more for next ones.
Just, yeah, just the board understanding, there's no decisions that have to be made until January or February on whether or not we proceed. And if we don't proceed, we've had conversations with them. We'll figure out how to make sure that all schools will be able to access, families for all schools to be able to access heat 39 kind of down the road. So I know there's lots of questions about how that will flow, but we will know that. We're going to put a pin in it and we're going to come back. Are there any questions you think need to be answered now? Done?
Related, how much is budget so far for these projects?
Well.
Big picture?
The McKenzie ones are a little bit larger project and that, that one was with all the AEs and engineering, that's probably going to be over four million range. And then the Ramona one's a little bit less. I think that was in the $2 million range. You know, subject, a lot of that is estimates.
Yeah, yeah.
Subject to what happens with the ultimate final design. That's, but then as far as how we budgeted that, because those projects, the anticipation and the scope was so much larger, we would start those normal, like much earlier in spring. And so roughly two thirds of those projects would hit fiscal year 21 or whatever.
Thank you.
And again, if pursuing, there is much discussion.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I wanted to remind myself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And both projects do currently address some other needs of buildings. They are not completely completed yet.
Yeah, that's right.
While we open the building, there are some other needs that we address during that same construction process. So it's not just much.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
And, and just one comment as always, we've done preliminary budgets on, on McKenzie and, and the current projects that are, that are in place now, we'll continue doing multiple budgets and continue doing that check and balance throughout the construction document creation, just to make sure that we have a handle on where market conditions are at and where, where cost to scope is at. And if we need to make any modifications, we can do that before we go out to bed.
Other question? Okay, not sure who's giving out the simple avenue.
I'll give it to them.
Thank you.
So it's probably been about 10 days. We had a meeting, a call with the village and some of the contractors that are going to be working on the Central Avenue project. And kind of here's some of the highlights that we shall be aware of. Actually, starting today from sharing the Green Bay Road, there'll be one way westbound from now until basically mid-December, early December, whenever we decide to stop in the fall. And then, you know, I think, you know, from what, oh, sorry. You know, they'll stop, you know, whatever the weather dictates and then unfortunately, the project will not be done at that point. They will have to pick back up in the spring or late winter. They were talking about sometime in March, it really will be weather dependent upon when they would be able to, you know, kind of get going at that. You know, one of our, you know, because, because of Central School being over there, one of the things that we will do, much like we did with the stormwater project behind High Crest, is we'll have weekly meetings where Stan and then Becky and I will be on the call, just to, you know, get weekly updates. One of the things that will likely occur from that, because the project will be moving, there'll be different points where the crews are really focused and certain, there's certainly a potential for certain parts of the sidewalks in those areas to be completely fenced off. And so one of the things I know the village was interested in is, as they have messages that they would really like to communicate to our central families, that they would, because we would be having these meetings, that they could share that information to Becky and that she would be able to push it out to the people who would be impacted the most by any rolling and changing conditions in that part of the, of the district. So that's pretty much. Does anybody have questions?
Questions on Central Avenue? Done.
Two. I'm sorry, they're replacing a stormwater drain or something? What are they doing?
Yes. It's very similar to the project that occurred on Locust. It's now going down the entire length of Central Avenue.
Yeah, I was, I was at Central on Friday morning for a little while.
Yeah.
And they were set up like right in front of Central. They had a couple of backups. They were digging down under the, literally in front of Central. So, and so we will work with, you know, certainly, you know, with the beginning and end day of, especially the afternoon being a little different at Central than time wise. They, they said that they, you know, one of the things that will happen is, we'll give them, you know, when is there going to be increased traffic? And while I doubt that they will completely stop working, they will, they will, you know, they will reduce the amount of trucks that are going in and out there so that buses or families and markets can, you know, be as close to normal as possible.
They had said previously that they would have flaggers on during, during arrival and dismissal times. Our arrival and dismissal times look a little different this year at least at the start of the year. So not only the time, but the way in which students will be arriving and dismissing will be a little more staggered. So there's quite a bit of coordination. So we're just going to do the best that we can in partnership with them. Are we all set for this week's device pickup with coordination with them, just to get families off to a solid start? That's a really big question.
I'll check, I'll check into that.
I would hate for that first experience of the school year to be followed back. Great, thank you. And Carrie, I'm going to just assume that they were going to try and do the noisiest pieces of this work before the students are back in the building.
Assuming is so great.
I know you have no control over this. This is something we talked extensively about last spring. Both the noise as well as the trucks and the debris and all of that. It was, the timing was coordinated then, but things have shifted for their time schedule. So we will emphasize that again.
Yeah, we're trying to have a, have another, get the weekly things going later this week. I, after our meeting on Thursday, I had sent the individual, the village, who had reached out to us initially to set up the weekly meetings. I let them know kind of what our modifications were. So hopefully they will be able to, you know, tackle some of the stuff that's right there by the building while we're.
Yeah. Do they have, does the village have project plans and maps and stuff like that on their website?
I don't.
I don't know if it's on their website. They have shared the maps with us previously. So I would assume it's on their website somewhere.
I haven't seen it. I'll take a look.
Take a look if you don't find it.
Okay, well. All right.
Okay, anything else on Central? I know this isn't on the agenda. I just want to ask, do we have any, any stormwater updates that we could give or everything's on schedule and you're feeling? Everything is on schedule as far as we know.
Yeah, no, you know, we, that was also, we do a weekly one with them. Everything seems to be on, on schedule. They put down the binder level at High Crest and stretched it off. And so they still obviously have a little bit of work that they'll do, which is why they're waiting. And so they would like to wait until dinner, probably late September to put that final level of asphalt on top of the parking lot at High Crest, because they're going to, they will have some, some trucks or heavy equipment going through there. But, you know, they will, they have promised that is a very, that last part of it is a very quick project. We had a day where there was no students. So, yeah, from, from our perspective, things have been progressing at a pace.
Another stumbling block in time.
That's good. So is that, we planned around the noise for that, right? It's been a long time.
We, we did. Remember, we talked extensively about the noise.
Yeah.
At High Crest. But admittedly, we did so with the somewhat of an assumption that school is in session as it typically would be.
Yeah, yeah.
At this point, not only is the Central Avenue project shifted and, and a little off schedule from what we had originally discussed.
Yeah.
But the school year is as well. So there's some complicating factors on. We are, we are flexible, but we'll continue to partner with them to mitigate any of those impacts.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I would maybe assume that they're pretty much done. So maybe it won't be as bad.
At High Crest?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant.
Pretty much done. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, you are correct. Okay, last call for questions from FDC items. Okay, seeing none, I'm moving on to the School Finance Committee. I turn the meeting over to SFC Chair, Mr. Sees, ready?
Thank you.
Oh, wait, Mark, sorry.
Oh.
You trying to get my attention?
No, I, no, I think Colby was waving goodbye. Thanks, Colby, and thanks to you.
Thank you. Have a great week.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, guys.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, Mark. Hard to manage in person and screens.
Keep an eye on the screen.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Yeah. All right, Mr. Sees, ready? It's all you.
Uh, well, I am going to quickly turn it over to Cory. He's second way.
Okay. All right. So the district budget for fiscal year 21, I'll just jump right into it. So, you know, back in May, the tentative budget had a surplus in the operating funds of a little over 22,000 excluding transfers. Currently, the fiscal year 21 budget now shows deficit of $2,131,000 in the operating funds excluding transfers. However, for, for the purposes of our discussion and, you know, kind of to keep things compared to previous years, the number that I'm going to focus on is 1,931,000. You know, what, what is the difference or, you know, what's maybe different than prior, prior years? So the State Board of Education has required us to now include in our educational fund anything that was previously labeled like fiduciary fund. So for us, that would be student activity funds, angel fund amounts. The fund balance in, in those accounts was about $300,000 in the last fiscal year. And so to, you know, put a, kind of looking back at a few years of history, talking with our audit firm, you know, about maybe what's the best way to approach this with the first year. So the idea behind it is, the State Board wanted districts to have their boards approve kind of a, you know, a budget amount for expenditures within that group of accounts. Because the reality is, at some districts, those accounts may have only been a few thousand, at some places that have, that are large, it could be several million dollars that he wanted. And even though that particular pot of money isn't taxpayer money, I mean, ultimately it comes from people who are also taxpayers, but it's, you know, schools and parent groups raising money or donating money for specific causes and then turn around and putting that money right back into specific kids and specific schools. So the idea was just that within, you know, a board approved budget, there was an amount that covered that. So we put in, based upon just kind of looking at last few years of history, 500,000 on the revenue side and 700 on the expenditures. So that's, that decreased, the idea being that it would cover normal years of expenditures and the idea that within those types of accounts, the reality is, they could spend all of the money that they accumulate this year plus what they added in the years if they really wanted to. So that's kind of where we, we got the additional $200,000 of deficit.
So is that, so next year would be like a wash or kind of presented as an and out?
Yeah, I, I think so. That would be, that would be my plan. I, as I had talked about, I don't know that I would want to, you know, just because we're required, it doesn't really, from my viewpoint, it doesn't really change like how we use this financially or operate. You know, they're like, it's a separate pot of money. It's district taxpayer money versus what's been raised by each of the buildings. So I don't know that I would want to continuously have a deficit every.
How do you show it on the expenditure side then? Or would you just do a separate line of this is what they want to do with it?
Um, you mean like going forward?
Yeah.
So like, within our budget, we added $500,000 for revenue.
Yeah.
$700,000 for expenditures.
Do you just don't allocate it? You just show?
No, it's just, the reality is, it's just, which is part of the thing that I guess I struggle with and why they're making us do this, is they just want us to throw one amount in there. And it's actually, and then when you think about the big, you know, probably 30 or 40 page document that is the official state budget, they created a separate section so they don't even, so that way when somebody looks at it, they can say, oh, here's the Ed Fund under the old way, and then here's the Ed Fund with the new way adding in like money for student activities. So, no, it's just like one amount for revenue, one amount for expenditures, not, not allocated. You know, I think, as you're thinking of it, you know, what, what is allowable by school or angel fund would be based upon what do they actually have within their account at any given time.
Yeah. That's what they want to do with it, the people who run the funds. So interesting.
So.
I had a question on this.
I was just going to ask, so those, those expenses are not approved by the board, is that correct?
His, historically, in most places that I've been, those expenditures typically, some places I've seen it where they are and some are, some are not. And usually in the cases where they have been approved by the board, it's usually after the fact of like, hey, we, you know, this particular group wrote a check for $2,000 here or $500 here. It's, in my experience, it's been an area where the board, you know, we truly are just the fiduciary of the money. We really don't have, you know, a lot of, like, we do have some say, but not, not a lot. So.
Okay. Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, probably would like to know more about it eventually.
Okay.
What the rule is.
Okay.
Yeah. So since we have some involvement with it now, we should probably get some awareness. So maybe like if it gets near 10% funding level, you know, or drops that, you know, there's some, set up some concept of when you would tell us something about it.
Okay. No, we can do that. And that also works to the purpose that if you get that known, then we can make that feel, since we're watching it, we need to do something.
Are you thinking specific to the angel fund as, as to the student activity?
Yeah, specifically.
Yes. Yeah, the angel fund for sure. And we do monitor that with some regularity and make a plea of funding and where that falls. We're in a good spot right now for our angel fund. But yes, we can.
Yeah, we can figure out.
As long as there are asking officially do something, make sure that if that's upside, that we can ask for more money.
Thank you.
Okay. So then, so then, you know, the focus of what I'm going to talk about is, you know, what kind of, what other changes led to going from basically $22,000 or less to 1,931,000 deficit. You know, I think it's worth noting that, you know, as I looked at a lot of these changes and areas, I think about what might the budget have looked like had we not had a pandemic. I do, the more I thought about it, I do really feel confident that we would be in a very similar position that was presented back in May, where we would be essentially at a balanced or, or maybe slightly better. You know, a lot of this is really truly indicative of, you know, additional costs that we're incurring or revenues that are, that have decreased. So as I walk through them, just kind of keep that in mind. You know, primary assumption as we prepared the budget was that we were, it would be following kind of the framework gold out at the end of July where K4 grades, kindergarten, fourth grades with the in-person instruction, fifth, the eighth grades would be on a hybrid in-person model. I assume that roughly 20% of the students would select a remote learning only option. Additionally, we, we added into the budget 10 FTEs for certified staff with benefits, an additional eight support staff with benefits. Both of those are items that we had talked about back in July. In addition, we had an additional amount for long-term subs over what we would normally budget in a given year, just to, you know, be aware that that's the likelihood that if someone, you know, were to go out, it's probably not, you know, going to be like a typical year where you might be out one or two days where you're sick, you're looking at, want somebody consistently in a classroom. So there's an amount for there. We reduced the assumption for interest earnings to 0.15% based upon some conversations I had with PMA. The way we went about the interest budget was we took every fixed income investment that we had and then used the 0.15% for any liquid money that we have during the year. Property taxes, which on the revenue side is far away the biggest source of revenue for the district. So I went back and looked just to help myself, you know, kind of get familiar with everything also as we're preparing for the audit. I looked at the last eight years, the average collection rate. So, you know, in any given year, I knew exactly what was built out in the fall and spring. And then I knew exactly what we had collected on a net level, collections minus any refunds that were processed by the county. And we had gotten to, over those eight years, an average of 98.65% collection rate. So as it relates to this particular year's budget, the budget is built with a collection rate of just under 98%. And for reference, the lowest year in the last eight, the reflection rate is 97.9%. So we're, you know, really close to that, that low watermark. And then, you know, what is that, what is that difference represent between what is an average year versus what we budgeted? That's about $425,000 that we're budgeted below what, what might be an average year. And then as far as, you know, how did, how did this, you know, thought process compare to what happened last year, this is the year that we sent it. For fiscal year 20, we were over budget. And, you know, but I think the one thing that, we showed, it would have been over the 98.65% collection rate. The one thing I guess I would caution is that, you know, the way we're structured in County, that, that second installment was due March 1st. And, you know, things really, really didn't kind of go south until middle of March. So I think, in my, in my experience, you know, in a normal setting, we started getting a lot of collection, a lot of distributions in like mid-February through kind of mid-March. So I, I think on some level, we were a little bit protected during the last disinter from what actually was occurring and what might be our future reality. So I think this is certainly, because of the. is occurring and what might be our future reality. So I, I think this is certainly, because of the, you know, how big of a, you know, it's, it's about 85% of our operating fund revenues. I think that is something that will have primary focus as we go through this year.
I think I'm following you. So how, how big a, I call it a reserve for refunds do we have now?
So, so what I, so when I went through and, and kind of looked at it, we, and then incorporating it with our, with our, uh, our worksheets for the audit, we set it up as so that we would have like one and a half percent as our allowance for uncollectibles. So that's within like 0.15%, um, you know, of what the average is, but that's, that's just kind of where we've settled.
And we'll know more, right?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've been getting, um, you know, I think the one thing that I've noticed is typically in a normal setting, once you start to see money come in, you get, it sort of ramps up and then you get a couple really large distributions and then it just really starts to fall off. And so it's just, you know, a very big hill. And ironically, I don't, I doubt that we're kind of doing this on purpose, but it feels like every time I, every couple of days, we get a distribution and it's like two million or two and a half. And so over the last few weeks, it's, it's, it's just been very, very steady. So, you know, I think what I'm curious, and I, I don't know that I can really give you an answer of, you know, oh, we're, you know, we're doing great. I think I probably won't feel comfortable of kind of offering a strong opinion on that until probably the end of October, given that the delay due date was October 1st. So while I, I think that a lot of people have just gone ahead, either because they had their uh, taxes escrowed, or, you know, they just decided, you know, interest rates are basically nothing, I'm just going ahead and pay it. So. But I think my, from my viewpoint, we finished the month of October. That's when I plan to take a really hard look and kind of probably in November bring something back and say, you know, we've now had a month plus the due date. This is kind of where we're, where we're sitting. Or how that fall collection.
Great. Yeah, I, I have two questions on the revenue side. You said, um, the payment rate, you said you went back to eight years. Did you go back to the recession?
I have not gone.
Cause I think that's where we would have been different, like '09, '10, and eight years back to '12. So, that, that's the one that I think was a better hopefully low watermark. So if you could go back and look at that, it's materially different than this would be. The other is I don't, you get the quarterly state payments at the rate of three, four, or five a year. So what did you build into the assumptions in terms of how many of those?
So, so in the assumptions that I have right now, I've got a, I've got a budget of four, four of those quarterly payments. You know, I think from my perspective, you know, the district operates on an accrual basis. So, you know, in my, in my experience, if that last payment, which we're seeing right now, you know, shows up after, after a particular fiscal year ends, um, you know, we would accrue that. I think the only time that maybe we wouldn't is if you were to look back over the last 10 to 12 years, there have been times where the state really got, um, you know, in a pitched financially. And some of those last fourth quarter payments that should have been in June, actually don't get paid until December. I remember, I can't remember how many years ago it was, but I remember being off over holiday break and it was like the day or two before New Year's and the next thing you know, we get, I was working on time, we got millions of dollars and I was like, oh, this is weird. And then I had to look it up and it's like, oh, okay, they finally decided it. So, and I know at the state level, that's, that's been the extreme, but a lot of times when they're a little bit delayed, you, you might not see that fourth payment until August or September. Like that's a more common, common. So I've, I've been budgeting.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll ask it again when we're all done, but on the revenue side, you've done a lot of work anticipating and recognizing the extra costs that we have. But it'd be good to say, and there's another range, you know, 2%, 5%, 1 million, whatever, that if things start, continue to go south and, you know, even beyond our usual expectations, there's more. Cause we're getting closer to numbers that we don't like to go into. So if you could have that kind of risk range for under revenue and expenditure side of not anticipated, but not unexpected things that might happen, that would, that would give a better risk rating.
Um, so then, one of the other big changes, the last couple of the bigger changes that were incorporated. So, you know, most of the fees here at the shirt that were, that show on there are like local line items, whether that's lunch, transportation, key 39, summer school, or even extracurricular, after-school type stuff. You know, as we worked through there, you know, working through calculations of how much to reduce those line items and then correspondingly trying to decrease the expenditure side as well, where we were able to, that data was really, trying to figure that out was really as of probably like the eighth or ninth of this month. So as you can imagine, the entire whole situation is extremely fluid. But, you know, in each of those situations, you know, we tried to identify like what might that revenue line item look like? You know, if we had implemented the model that we had talked about, you know, basically for, for most of the summer, and then going in and identifying correspondingly, uh, where we would be able to reduce expenditures as well. So we certainly, you know, reduced lunch fees and transportation fees, but we also reduced the expenditures budget for both of those line items as well. And then the last big area is that we added to the budget was just identifying some amounts that we, that would be for rentals, equipment purchases, um, extra cleaning and PPE supplies that we would not normally see. And then just, you know, because we were reducing class size at the lower grade levels, you know, being able to outfit additional grade level sections with technology curriculum materials as, as we went through the planning process. So, um, you know, those were, those were probably the big buckets of areas that we changed things. As, as it relates to capital projects, the.
Corey, sorry. Can, where in this document, can you see, can we see the differentiation in, in the budget document we have?
For?
For what you just described as far as additional.
Oh, like the breakdown by, by driven area.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see.
No, we did not, we did not like get down into detail.
Gotcha.
But if that's something you guys would want me to, as we went through there, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, right? It's dynamic. So we're all interested in how much it is. And then if you could put some thought to one time versus recurring potentially.
Yep. No, no, I think that's, I, I think, you know.
Oh, yeah, eventually. I, thank you. I interrupted.
Mark, did you want to get in?
I was just gonna echo John's, John's idea. Yep, like it.
Okay. Um, so then if you guys want to, you know, we gave you some of the printouts from forecast five that kind of lays out different scenarios. So just like, you know, beyond, you know, what changed, a couple of other thoughts as, as we kind of look through. So I'm not gonna talk about each individual slide. You know, I think my focus will be on the first couple of pages with the operating funds. So if we look at the, the very first page where the column says, uh, budget for fiscal year 20, if you go all the, all the way to the bottom, it references an ending fund balance of 37.9 million dollars. Um, you know, we're, we're still working through the audit, like it just started, started last week and there, and there's still a possibility that some, some things could change as we work through it. But, um, you know, because the fiscal year 20 ended better than, than I had anticipated for a variety of reasons, which we'll, we'll get into at another time. You know, I, I would envision that as we think about how this year, the, the fund balance might end at the end of fiscal year 21, that really instead of starting the year with about a fund balance of 37.9, that it would really be more like 41 million. You know, give or, give or take a little bit. Um, that would be a, that would be a bit of a starting point. So, you know, as we think about the, the 1.9 million deficit excluding transfers, you know, one way to, one way to approach it is certainly almost all or some of it, you know, could be offset by the increase in fund balance that we just experienced with this year 20. So, one of the other big things in there on this slide is if you look at the other financing uses line, it's 8.3 million. That amount is the same as what it was in May. It represents the exact same things that had been previously talked about where it would be the last parts of any projects from the summer of High Crest Central and Harper. And then tentatively, which is something that the board would not have to make a decision until much later on in this year, is that it has the first parts of Ramona and Mackenzie's King 39. And I believe it also has, um, you know, that would be big parts of those projects. And I believe it may even have small parts of, of potentially some other projects. I, I think the junior high and Harper, they were, relatively speaking, they were, you know, multimillion dollars. They were either, you know, something that was in the mid six figures or, you know, possibly just over a million dollars. But in those cases, I believe the planning for those projects were something that you wouldn't start until June school was out. And so as it relates to fiscal year 21, you might only have two to three, two weeks of work. So. One other thing to note as it relates to, to the projects, you know, kind of given the uncertain environment, and I know this year, most districts, the construction process started a little bit earlier. I know we're the district I left, once we realized we weren't coming back, we got those contractors, we got those contractors in the building. And so while the, the transfer amount for fiscal year 21, you know, is, is the same, you know, I think as this year progresses, if, if we decided to proceed with projects like that, I think it's important to note that. And then we got to a point in, you know, May or June where we realized they were not going to be in a building for the rest of the year. If something like that were to happen like this year, we would certainly, just to make sure that we're done by the filing, we would certainly encourage those contractors. And then the one thing financially, you know, why, why that would be important is it just pushes more, more of the project in the fiscal year 21. You know, when you look at over a two-year period of 21 and 22, total amount of money is, that's spent is the same, but it just, you know, what falls on what year.
So that's helpful.
Yep. You know, as far as on this operating fund slide, you know, as far as, you know, big changes, as we slip to the second page, where it's the revenue analysis for the operating funds. You know, I think the, the thing I, I would probably, I plan to pay attention because as I mentioned, everything is so fluid, is, you know, they're dropping other local revenue, which is really just the fees that we're charging, as I mentioned. You know, lunch, transportation, any of the other programs. And so, you know, as the year model, or, you know, progresses and if it ends up being different than, than what we had, you know, planned for in our assumptions, those amounts would certainly go down. But the flip side is so would expend, so it's a corresponding expenditures. Now the one downside is as I've looked at each of those areas, where we won't always see a dollar for dollar reduction. Sometimes there may be a much bigger decrease in the revenue than what we're able to do on the expenditure side. So I think there is some, some downside risk within those particular areas. And then as we flip to the, I guess it would be the third page where it says expenditure analysis for operating funds. You know, obviously the salary and benefit components, um, you know, are, the percentage increases are larger than what you would, you know, expected in a normal year. And that's really a reflection of the intention to add additional FTEs to support this, this current environment. And then as we scroll down to where the line item, the row that says capital outlay, um, you know, one of the bigger reasons for being able to decrease that by such a large amount was the district had been proactive and back in the spring, once everything changed, um, really going after and placing early orders for technology. So the reality is because we were able to place those orders, get that, you know, you know, spend that money before the end of the year. Um, you know, we just transferred that a budget amount from one year to the next. That's why you'd see such a large decrease there. And then the other objects line where it says a 50% increase, that's really the line item that contains the $700,000 for the student activity, angel funds, expenditures that's required of us. And, um, so that, that's, that represents the bulk of that area. Now I'll just touch on the, the ed funds, um, and then we can update any other questions. In the ed fund on the revenue, the historical summary, you know, one of the bigger, the, probably the biggest revenue change was at the federal level. A big component of that was the additional budgeting for the additional parish money that we were notified about. That was between 80 and 90,000 dollars. It was, that particular program was meant to help school districts across the country. And the way that money was allocated was based upon your title one or your low income count. So, um, you know, depending on what district's demographics, that could have been, you know, a lot of money. In the case of like CPS, it was just a smaller amount for us. So, as you look at, you guys, as you scroll through and you were wondering about the funds, all the additional staff that were added and budgeted for, I budgeted those in the ed fund. So, you know, as far as, you know, like I said, I don't want to walk through each one of these slides. I don't know that we can spend the time on that. But I guess my summary thoughts are the things that I would have, or, you know, kind of take away from this is, you know, as I'm sure you've heard a million times now, compared to a normal year, like the budget, like, you could probably ask me to do this every week and then there would be changes, you know, I think that's indicative of how fluid the overall situation is and it will continue to be fluid, I feel like, all year. You know, I think we've, you know, tried to plan and account for a lot of the things that we will see on the expenditure side, you know, can we guarantee that we've thought of every single thing? No. But I think, you know, we are, you know, very aware of, of the areas that would be really fluid and especially on the expenditure side. I know on the revenue side as well, I plan to, you know, more than any other year of my career, you know, be really focusing on like, kind of keeping track of like, how are things changing as we get enrollment data and staffing data? And then we get through the month of September and then October, you know, as we work our way through, from my own perspective and having a, a good tab on, you know, okay, we started the year with this idea that the deficit was 1.9 million. You know, how does that change over time? And if that's something that the board wants, you know, is curious or wants to know about, we can certainly figure out ways to incorporate that into our meetings. So, so if there's any questions, we'll, but.
I, I have two, right? So one is, so there's this increase, right? Year-to-year increase on educator salaries.
Sure.
What's approximate number relates to just normal raises, right, for the teachers we already had? And then what, where is the new, like, what's the new amount for the additional?
Sure.
Professionals?
Sure. So, so for the FTE for, um, for the certified staff, so at 10, so the assumption of salary and benefits to hire one of those is just under 80,000, so like 79 and change. So I just assume 80.
Yeah.
You know, how that comes in could certainly vary based upon the experience and education level of the individuals that are. Then we have the eight FTE support staff.
Yeah.
So for the long-term, so that one is the salary component for the support staff is about 225,000. But then you would, the idea would be that we would hire, you know, hire them as full-time, so there would be benefits on top of that.
Sure.
So you're probably pushing 300,000 in that category. And then for the long-term subs, I, the budget that we had put in was about 260,000. So, um, each, just for reference, you know, like to pay a long-term sub is about 215 a day. So it comes out to like 15 grand.
Sure.
For like a 12-week leave. So those are the, so when you add all those up, you're probably pumping about a million and three, I think.
Okay.
Just, and that's just in those, in those categories.
I see.
Corey, could you repeat the number of the long-term sub amounts?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, yeah, it's right at about 260,000. So that's. Oh, sorry. It's, yeah, it's right at about 260,000. So that's, that's about 13, just under 13 grand or the assumption is like it would be a 12-week, 12-week leave.
So about 1.4 of additional incremental additional salary for COVID.
Yeah.
Aaron?
You you said my name, right?
I did.
Yeah.
John can't see you.
So you said that the the year is very fluid money-wise and there's a lot in flux, which obviously I think we all understand why. And you said that, you know, the deficit of 1.9 million could change over time. I think for me, it would be helpful to see. Or for you to tell us at each committee of the whole, kind of where we're at on that going forward.
I have a comment related to what Aaron said. Where do you find the cash balance? I don't want to see that.
So if you want to see our, not on these reports.
No, no, later on, just as we go forward.
Sure.
Be good to see that.
Okay. Yeah, one of the things that you'll see next, at the next, next Monday, you know, as we. As I understand it within, where there's many things that come to each board meeting, but one of the is the monthly financials and there's.
Yeah.
You know, what are our investments look like? And then one of those would have, what is our cash balance?
Put that in bold on top. That would be good.
Not a problem.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. So I, good, nice report and 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 good question, sort of related to several of those questions. I have a couple of things. One is, I believe that our lowest cash balance during the year typically, if I'm remembering this correctly, is sort of at the early part of the calendar year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would expect, I would, I would expect that, given that we're in Cook County, that our low point would be like late January. Into like the first couple of weeks of February before we start getting more, more of that spring collection.
So sort of building on John's point, I think, you know, it would be helpful to understand if we are. I I I don't need an exact estimate of what the low point will be, but if there are any yellow flags there, you know, it'd be nice to know ahead of time. In terms of what are, where we'll get to in in our liquidity. The other thing, and and this is building on, I think, both Aaron's and and John's points. Around the uncertainty, I would be very interested in addition to saying, you know, how's this going? Also, what's your, what's the probability distribution of your estimate? In other words, you can pick your favorite metric, but I'll give you one example. If you wanted to say, look, I think there's a 50% chance we're going to be between, you know. 1.2 million and 1.6 million on extra teachers for COVID. I am just making that up, obviously. And maybe you would say, no, I think the 50% chance is between 1.35 and 1.45. But to get that sense of of the uncertainty would be helpful to me. Does that make sense to you?
Be really hard to predict. I think at this point, the 10 FTE is our best estimate of what we'll need, but you're right that it may be more and it may be less.
Yeah.
So I guess the question. Yeah, it's it's not a prediction though, Carrie. It's just an estimate, right? It's if you, if I told, if I said, okay, you know, you, you, right now, we think it's 10 FTEs. If I said, hi, I'm from the future, I'm coming back from a year from now, turns out it was 20. Would you be kind of surprised? Would you be super surprised? You know, what's the, what's the level? You know, I'm, I, you know, it's sort of, am I, are you willing to say it's between eight and 12 or is it going to be like, I don't know, it could be zero to 35? I have no idea. So it's really just a, you know, how, what's your best estimate of how much it could vary? And and it's not a, it's not a prediction. There's no, it's actually very easy to do because there's no math that needs to be done. It's a huh, how surprised would I be by X? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, because I I don't have any idea if you're saying 10, but it might be eight, or it could be 12, or if you're saying 10, but it could be three, or it could be, you know, 40. I'm hoping it's not that.
Mark, are, Mark, are you asking for a range?
I'm asking for a range and I'm asking for a sense of what that range represents. Whether that represents like absolutely it's not going to be more than this or less than that, or if it represents, well, I'd be kind of surprised or I'd be super surprised, that kind of thing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then the last thing, I just wanted to make sure that I'm I'm hearing the numbers, the rough numbers, don't, I'm not, I'm, I'm at like two significant digits, right? I I'm looking at 1.4 million is is my rounding, but what I heard was. Round about 400,000, I think you said 425, in terms of reduced revenue from lack of collections. Round about 1.4 in terms of extra personnel costs. And round about 1.9 or call it even two in terms of overall deficit. And then the extra, the 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 change in accounting principles to give us another couple hundred thousand. Am I getting those numbers roughly all right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I had one more number that I care about. So what about the supplies? How big is that number?
You mean PPE or?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
Intensive curriculum.
Thank you. Yeah, all the COVID-related supplies.
So there, there's a lot of. Yeah, it's, it's, as I went through, it's, it's down, I mean, it's certainly hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I guess the one thing I would, would offer up as it relates to this, and certainly I can put together like the breakdown like you want for.
Yeah.
For for next meeting, but. You know. I think it's, I think it's, when I look at it, it's it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I guess the way I would be approaching it this year is, you know, we put that in there because we know like this is above and beyond what a normal year might be.
Yeah.
But I think, like, what's probably hard is I had conversations with other like budget management departments is. Not knowing like, okay, if I'm going to incur 50,000 or 100,000 or 150 on something. Can't, does that mean I'm doing something different than I normally would have done? And some of, some of that or all of it could be offset or come out of my existing budget.
Yeah.
The answer is I really don't know. I would rather plan that when we have the capacity to handle, especially for some of these items that were. The supplies and things that were specifically safety related or allowed us to. You know, getting to the point where we felt like we could bring students back on on campus. So. I think an approach would certainly be like, as we work through the year, especially if, as we update the board and we identify like, okay. We're minus 1.9 or if we started to move in a way that felt, that made us a little less comfortable, I think. The focus becomes, all right, like, how do we, you know, kind of tighten things and make sure that it just doesn't really, you know, get out of, get out of control for that. So I think, you know, if we can tackle these new expenditures within existing budgets, sure, that would be outstanding, but I don't know that we can really do that.
Oh, yeah, no, not our focus. Yeah, that's your focus. We want to approximately, I think, speaking for everybody on the board, know how much. You know, and if you say things like, okay, well, here's the temporary stuff that's maybe, you know, disposable kind of stuff. Versus permanent things, like you know, whole.
Like a COVID accounting, what is this pandemic costing that is right?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, sorry.
Well, if this related to Mark's first question, I, and you may have already told us this, but with the anticipated. Potentially 10 certified staff and eight. Do we know where we are now in terms of we hired this many people? We're going to talk about that in a little question today. Okay.
I'm sorry, could you, could you speak a little louder?
We're still looking to hire about 12.
Thank you.
What I'm asking is, is this our goal to have hired now? Like a week in advance and then potentially we may need to hire more as the year. Progresses? Or is this just a placeholder for?
This is a placeholder for now, and then by the end of this week and early next week, we'll have a better sense of. What that actually looks like as we're building out our class assignments, class lists and staff assignments. The reality is though, throughout the year, depending on how many people need to take leave, we may need to increase that even further.
Yes.
So we know where we're at now and what we need to be hiring for in the next 10 days approximately. What, what is much more difficult to predict is what happens in October when.
That was exactly my question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen?
So that's all that we're. It may have been discussed in part then, but it's. I'm wondering in the timeline for the FTC programs. If we. Always look, how we have that laid out in terms of air conditioning, your budgets for the ventilation and your personnel. In the future, the top part of that is, because I'm wondering if any of that, so we could proactively. Well, some of that is a pro釘to. Give some of the questions that have come off. Or complaints that have come up. To improve upon, like even do better than what we plan, that it goes, it may not be necessary, but. If it was possible to do better.
So we looked at moving up to the WJHS second story air conditioning, remember that is the next project on the list. We looked at moving it up to the summer and it just wasn't possible by the time we knew that the pandemic was happening. And so that was not possible. That still is on the list of to-dos for next summer, which is as early as we would be able to accomplish that. Anything beyond that is really now starting to look, well, beyond so many unknowns. And again, to reiterate, as we talked about on Thursday, we have need some pretty significant improvements to the ventilation system in terms of upgraded openers. Increased air exchange rates. I, I, I want to emphasize that.
Done so far in the, in the opening, the safety of the opening, I know that we're safe. It's just that, you know, to do better, we've always had a historical, you know. We've tried to do better than the, you know, what's good enough, so that if we can, since those were on the horizon, those projects. Just wondering how close we were and if there was any possibility of switching. Anything around to move those forward, you know, into our, this will. The upcoming projects and moving.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a good thought. I think in terms of large space air conditioning, there's really not that. The next project is the second story WJHS. And so, you know, that'll be a decision that will, the board will need to make in advance of this upcoming summer. The other large space air conditioning projects at this point, because of the limitations of being classrooms. Some of those large space air condition spaces, large air conditioning spaces are 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 not in the short term going to be used as much as we had anticipated. It's simply because we go on the classes for. The other thing, again, to keep in mind with the pandemic is air exchange is far more important than air conditioning. And so I just, I want to just keep kind of putting those talking points out there because it's important for us to to recognize those differences, although one is discomfort, the other is really helpful.
So even there, my question would be. Yes, the air exchange is number one. If we have. We compare that and increase it even beyond what is requested. And then the next would be, we'd be. Prudent to take a look at some of the other things that are possible. Or other things that might be bothering, you know, that have been brought up, that we feel, those things. Or like you just said, if you have to choose.
Yeah, the UV stuff.
The UV stuff or the, you know, I don't know if we know. What, you know, if that's, if ever happen, we can do that, but if we're in charge of that. You know, could we do that? That's all I'm thinking. Is to add things like that with relatives, you know, without. Into, I don't know.
That's one of your.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's helpful. That's helpful to this discussion because it would go into the capital expenditures, right, related to COVID. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Ellen. Oh, sorry. Transportation. Now the right time to talk about that or? You guys probably saw that I included stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
I don't know if you guys.
Tell us what you think.
Okay, so. So the reason you didn't get this before today, before today is because. The communication, I was wondering, I had thought about how quickly after we have a board meeting, potentially adjust the year, do I get contacted by the transportation company? Well, the answer is less than 48 hours because I got the email late Saturday afternoon. I read it, it happened to be online when I came in, I read it, ordered it to Dr. Crumswell right away. Both decided like, hey, this is certainly worthy of talking with the board about. So just kind of where I'm at with what they, so really the the letter that they sent us. You know, kind of references, you know, what happened back in the spring where the district agreed to an amended agreement and. So we had an amended agreement where for the part where once they had like laid off their bus drivers and pairs. That the district would pay them 37% of normal cost. So one of the thoughts that I immediately had, thinking about how the current year is going, and we have, I think I told you in July. Seven, the initial ridership for bus riding was about 70% of the normal year. Well, as we really start playing and we've gone through there, you know, one of the things that we've always done is that. Up and through the first two weeks of school, if someone's not happy with. The bus stop or just anything about it, they can request to not be a part of transportation anymore and then they'll get a refund. So as of last, early last, early middle of last week, we were up to like 220. You know, students that had families that have requested to drop out of transportation. So. You know, when they reference 30% of normal cost, the first thing that comes to my mind is, well, what's normal cost? Are we, are they thinking what a normal year might look like? Because as I have been working with Michelle, the reality is, you know, I I think I told you July, we're, we were limited to 15 regular buses and five special ed. The reality is, as we're dealing with less students per bus and less people interested, and then. A lot of those dropouts were at the 5-8 level, which I think, you know, just as me assuming. What parents are thinking is that, well, if my kid's only going two days a week, I can figure out two days a week, just swinging my money back off the air. So that was kind of the thought process. So I don't know exactly where those numbers are settled, but it's certainly realistic that. In the budget that I presented to you guys today, incorporated in there when I had reduced regular transportation, I had pulled out one of the regular, the cost of one regular route, which is like. About $60,000 because from the initial data that that Michelle and I were looking at, like, I don't, I don't think that we're going to need all of them. And it's more and more people drop out, it could be less. So what are we 30, what is 37% of? I guess that was my first thought. Then, you know, in their letter. You know, they talk about. You know, what is the 37% represent? It's, has nothing to do with. The drivers and pairs, they've been furloughed, they would get unemployment plus any other federal stimulus that that may be out there for them. You know, it would really be cost, really be meant to cover their, their, like, you know, back office costs and insurance and bus payments. You know, they, they pointed out that the state has said that if we continue to pay for, pay them any amount for services that we don't actually get. We can't put that in our transportation claim and get money back. Here's where that becomes.
We cannot.
No, we can. And we were able to do that last year. You know, that was like an emergency order that the General Assembly allowed, is allowing the state board to do. But as it relates to like regular ed transportation, you know, we get basically $6,700 total. More on the state for regular ed transportation, right? So if the budget line item for that is in a normal year, 800 to maybe 850, 100,000. You know, the, the, the bulk of that difference is made up by parents paying transportation fees. Now covers most, but not all. So in that, in that, in that respect, you know, whatever we would be paying them for regular would not really net us anything from the state, but on the special ed side. But on the special ed side, the state does reimburse about 80%. It seems to fluctuate between 80 and 82. So on the special ed side, we would, we would be getting some, getting some money back. And then, just to refresh everybody, if you were to go back to, I think it was the May meeting when the agreement was formally, the amendment was formally recognized, in addition to paying them the 37% of normal cost, you know, I think one of the things that we received on both sides of that was for fiscal year '21, the DRT structure increase went from 4% down to 1.3% for right now. And then for fiscal year '22, it went from 4.25% down to 2%. So it's, you know, it's not like the district didn't receive, you know, the district didn't receive some.
Hey, Cory, I keep reminding me, so when we priced the bus service out, was it, is it similar to prior years, the amount that was paid in, or was it already adjusted for, you know, two days a week or? You know what I'm saying?
The, the bus fee.
Yeah, was it the same as?
Our, our parents.
Yeah.
Same as it has been.
Okay, but, right, but it's been reduced, well, they'll actually use it less.
They will use it less, but the fee being collected is the same. They will, they will use it less at the 5-8 level because of the hybrid model at the elementary level, only during those transition, we'll be walking weeks, so they use it less and they'll be using it every day.
Okay, so, so K through four, same, just 5-8, we might have issues.
Well, yes and no, they're using it less, but there's lesser riders on the bus.
Sure.
That B, from a parent perspective, a parent might be frustrated by that.
Yeah.
That's understandable, and yet from a user perspective and the cost associated with it, we have to substantially reduce the number of children on each bus.
Oh, sure, yeah.
The actual cost being put right forward are significantly increased as a result of that, because instead of having 15 kids, you only have 20 kids on a bus.
Okay.
So, yeah, but there's.
Yeah, I know, I hadn't, I hadn't put it all together until right now.
And that was, and that was what I had incorporated into kind of the budget planning on the revenue side, because the revenue side was that, you know, hey, our limitations are the 24 students on each bus. And, and that, you know, the ridership would certainly be a lot, a lot less, so that, that was, that was big difference there.
Okay. Yeah, oh, sorry, Frank.
Yeah, so, so tying it back to some of the things we said before in terms of identifying additional risks, whether it's air range or it's just identifying, it could be another thousands of, hundreds of thousands of dollars. On transportation, there's, we, we spent a lot more money than we received and it looks like there's a reluctance on the spend side for the number to come down as much as we like from the bus company. And there's a potential on the revenue side, there are certainly some scenarios where the revenue could drop a lot. So, you know, looking at the budget, there's a three to $700,000 risk number that can happen for a week. So when you're looking at, at risk areas, this is one of the bigger ones, or that type of number would be one of the bigger ones?
Yeah, yeah, I see where, Frank, I'm probably, you're headed to, you're going where I was thinking to go, right, you're going further, which is, so the parents, can they ask for a refund now?
Yes.
Until when?
Two weeks into school.
Yeah, because we might be funding, right, buses that are half empty or more than half, sorry, three quarters.
Well, I think.
We need them to be half empty.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, three quarters.
But I think, I think to your, I think to your point, like, so I just, I have the sheet open, so as it relates to the fees we would collect from parents, like in May, that line item for, for budget was 617,000. After estimating, I had reduced that down to 220,000 for the budget I presented today. So we dropped almost 400,000 out of there already, that's incorporated in the negative 1.9. I had in May, the transportation line item for regular ed was like a million, I dropped it to 820,000. That was a combination of looking at historical numbers, seeing where we were at, already, plus I pulled out one regular ed bus route that I just felt like we're not going to have. So that was $880,000, like, on the budget side. And then this, for special ed, the, the, that line item was 1,036, and I dropped that down to 960. So, yeah, you're correct, like, the net for related transportation right now is like a minus 141,000, but we could certainly see the 220 that are still in there that, you know, if more people, you know, the flip side to that is, if we really, really do whittle it down, as particularly at certain buildings, we would certainly do our best to try and eliminate some of those regular ed routes. So, like I said, it won't, I don't think, dollar for dollar savings, but I certainly think there would be opportunity to go for maybe if we had 14 regular ed, to drop it down a couple, you know, I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not focused on savings, I'm now thinking in terms of parental decisions and traffic jams at the school.
Oh, yeah, and we talked about that in July, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a significance. If we eliminate busing, that's why they have these traffic jams.
That's not good, right?
But, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
And we're, we're looking at the, not monetize, but we have to get a range for what the worst case upside extra cost could be. I mean, there are scenarios we never get to, but, you know, we could close down the school, though we're open for an entire year, but still have us costs and have no revenue.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we're looking at a risk range, you know, that doesn't mean that it's something that we expect to happen or that we want to happen, but we need to understand how bad could it be?
Well, I have a related.
This is one example, we don't have to put a problem, we can, we don't have to 100% put that number in, but we need to have, we need to look at some scenarios that are worse than, well, we don't expect it to happen. It's like, well, but, you know, what are some of the worst things?
So I think that that's fair for those things that we have control over, but at this point for busing, I think the board has made the decision to continue with busing, so unless the decision is going to be to revert on that, doing some of this, this risk analysis is, there isn't a decision point related to it. The empty, for sure, there is.
Yeah.
But the transportation, I think, unless we're going to, you're going to direct, we're going to eliminate busing for the school year, which you haven't done yet. Then I think we're, we're, we're risk analyzing things that there isn't going to be a decision point.
Well, what, what about this, if I could? What, what I'm worried about is you have parents who pay the full bus price, right, and are getting half the service. Yeah, I know, it's more, it costs more, it's COVID, right? But should we think in terms of lowering the price and rebating some of the fee to, to keep those kids on the buses?
I don't know.
Because, because the choice, the choice is, you know, all or nothing now. Right, it's like, oh, do I want to pay this full amount for two days or not? Right, versus do we rebate enough that, that they, they stay, you know, at least understanding that what they're paying for resembles what they paid for last year? Lisa, did you want to say something?
I guess I'm just wondering, it doesn't seem like it's a price, I mean, for some it's probably price, but this is really about, like, am I going to put my kid on a bus with a bunch of other kids? So if we dropped it by a third, I, I just don't know that that's the price point. And for me, my, you know, I sit there and think, I can't drive my kids, I'm paying the bus no matter what, like, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I'm almost thinking, just given our agenda and the time, like, I don't know that there's much wiggle room here.
That's a thought, it's another way to handle it.
I think John, it's a, it's a thought.
For consideration, we can move on.
I think it's a thought, the other thing to keep in mind is that other board members, I think, last month were advocating increasing the fees for busing because the costs were going up so exponentially per rider. So I think the middle ground is just keeping it flat, recognizing that some are.
Yeah.
Receiving fewer trips as a result of that, and others are receiving the same number of trips, but on a less crowded bus.
Yeah. I get it, I get it.
Go your way, I think you're absolutely right on.
Thoughts, alright, so.
I don't know, Frank, you have a number.
We're all ready to move on, I, oh, Mark wants to say something.
I, I was just going to say, so for the purposes of transportation, I agree with Carrie, there is, I, I don't see a decision, decision point, I think we just, we, the buses left, left the stop, as it were. But I would say, Carrie, that from, from the perspective of, of understanding the, the risk, the decision point for me is more of the high level decision point of how big of a deficit are we going to run this year? What, you know, are we going to have to find other things to cut, et cetera? It's not a decision about, a point about transportation, but it is interesting to me from an overall budget perspective, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, that was my point, that was my, I mean, that's.
Okay, thanks.
Small item, but the aggregate, you know, where are we going to be in the reverse?
Yes, that makes sense.
So I guess one, if no one else, I guess one thing that we do need, since I had printed this out, is because they are, you know, essentially, you know, if you read through the letter, what they, I think what they really want is they would love to see an amendment that matched what happened in the spring, where they basically get some level of, you know, the 37% for any days during the year that are remote. So, you know, when I, when I thought about, you know, presenting this to you guys, you know, one of the things that I know that I need and probably back in Crimmskoli is, you know, regardless of what happens today, even if we don't make a decision, like, they're, they're going to continue to, you know, ask and request for this. So at some point, we're going to have to, it doesn't have to be today, but certainly think about, make a decision, you know, do we want to do what we did in the spring where we, you know, agree to some sort of amendment or try to negotiate something? I guess that's really where, as an administrative team, we would need some sort of direction from the board, feelings on how you guys are feeling about this. I realize you just got the information, so I don't know that we need to decide today, but it is something that.
Well, and maybe a, a decision that we want to look at if the closure is for less than a month, so if, if the predicted closure is for less than a month, then maybe we would be willing to, to compensate because we expect the bus will need to continue to run. If the closure is for more than a month, then maybe that decision is different, so there may be some, some decision points there that we want to look at too.
Mark.
I was just going to say, I think one thing that would be really helpful is to have the administration's perspective and recommendation on this. I think you guys are close to it and you understand it much better than we do. So I, I understand you want a decision, I think it, it'll be helpful to have a recommendation first, does that make sense?
Yes.
We did need to because so many people chose to remove their child from the bus, so as far as I'm aware right now, we haven't needed to eliminate certain people from being eligible. But I should defer to Cory because he might have.
It's certain, I think it's certainly possible that people under half a mile will still be, but we're, you know, like, the, as we're working through, like I said, there was a lot of people who dropped out, and we were still getting, you know, people have decisions through, you know, basically it was the end of last Monday, and having Michelle work through that, and then, you know, quite honestly, I don't know if, you know, what was decided on Thursday, we'll have things even further, but we're, you know, trying to, you know, work through that. In a sense, certainly, you know, our original plan was based upon a distance, I think, of a mile or so, anybody under that, but as a lot of people have dropped off, certainly, if there is space on a bus existing, like, we will, like, we're not going to have a bus that has capacity of 24, with 10 people lining it, and only have, you know, 12 on it, we're going to service as many as we can.
So we'll, we'll go ahead and wait for your recommendations.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Let's see.
Okay, so this, so the WISC budget, there's been new changes, it's the exact same as, as it was in May, and what we will bring next Monday will be, you know, the revenue matches the expenditures, I think the total was like 135,000, so, no changes there.
Great. Seeing no questions.
Okay.
Should we go on?
Alright, so then the next one is, there should be like a resolution in front of you, and it's for the post-issue, it's tax compliance report. You know, basically when districts, you know, are able to issue, you know, tax abated obligations, you know, that, that, stuff like that comes with certain requirements, you know, at, at the federal level to make sure that we're in compliance with all, with all those areas. And so then, you know, one of my roles as compliance officer is, you know, to go through and review everything to make sure that we haven't violated any of the areas. And so, you know, where we're at is that we can proceed with passing this resolution and any compliance for another year. So my, my, I believe that districts can do this at different times of the year, but for District 39, from what I've been told, this occurs at the Ochsley, so I don't know that there's, you know, anything new or different on it, so.
Great. Alright, well, that's the end of, unless there are questions, no questions, alright, the end of the finance committee.
Thank you, everyone, I'm going to suggest we take a five minute break.
Thank you. Thanks, Cory.
Thank you.
How about Cory?
Yeah. Thank you.
One, one day we'll be able to see your face.
I know, I know. I, you know, I was able to, having watched the meetings before I started and everybody was remote, so I was able to see everybody else's faces, but I think in a lot of meetings that I've been a part of, you know, if it wasn't for Zoom, a lot of the fellow initiative team would know it, would like, so.
Cory, the, the. Are you ready to take over on the strategy side?
Sure. I think I will say, and I'm turning it over to.
Are we recording still or we're good?
We're good.
Okay. He turned it over to you.
Oh, okay, I'm turning it over to Dr. Crimmskoli.
Thanks. Alright, so this board, this morning, the board has provided a tabletop copy of the resolution that the board will be asked to consider for adoption at the August 24th regular board meeting. The resolution really just take, essentially takes formal action to affirm the plan for reopening. That action is not required, but it is recommended, and so the board can choose to pursue that or not. So I'll, I'll just need to know if we want that on the agenda for the 24.
Carrie, I had one question about this, it looks as though in addition to expressing formal support for the plan, it also takes care of the issue we have about suspending board policies or enabling changes in board policies, et cetera. It looks the way it does that is it says that if something needs to be done to support the implementation of the plan, which is different from what's in our typical board policies, then you'll consult with Lisa before doing it, and then the board will take action at the next, you know, possible time, but otherwise, then you can do it. So it's a, it's a much more limited version of the sort of overall board policy power that we gave you back in, I don't know, April or May or something, that ends in August, is that correct?
That is correct, thank you, Mark, for pointing that out as well, that is an important distinction and is correct, it, it does allow for that.
So it seems to me that that is, so it seems to me that we've, we've put two things in one resolution, which I have no problem with because I'm in support of both of them, but I think the board should make sure that we're all aware that we have two things in there, and if you like, one of them, but not the other, then let's flag that, or if you just for whatever reason want to have it in two different resolutions, then let's, let's flag that, does that make sense?
Yes, very, very good.
So let me ask the board, just before we get to open questions, you know, given that the two, the sort of two ideas in here are, one, supporting the plan, and two, making it so that Carrie and the administration can just get Lisa's approval before, in a, in a sort of urgent situation, in order to do something that is, that maybe, may have some implications on the board policy level, and then we'll, we'll approve it later. So those are the two things, how do people feel about those two things?
I think they're related enough that they're okay in one.
Okay, by the way, I can't see John, so John, if you have something, you're going to have to say something. Oh, there we go, perfect. Okay, so it sounds like everybody's okay with having them together, and I'm guessing that means everybody's okay with the resolution, but it's, any, any questions, debate? And I'm guessing that means everybody's okay with the resolution, but it's, any, any questions, debate, thought on that part?
So I had, I, I got a leg up on this one. I had seen it, so I just had recommended, uh, that we consider maybe some introductory language, kind of addressing what our commitments and priorities are straight from the plan. I was a little confused about, um, section four. It just, it looks like just language, language that we needed. I can go back and forth with Dr. Krimskoli about this. But I think that when you see a revised version, it may have just a little more flower, a little, little background. And, and no language that would be shocking, it would be lifted from stuff you've already seen.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments on this?
I have one. So when we say the plan, what are we, I'm not seeing a reference to a specific plan.
So what will be attached, um, not necessarily to this document per se, but it will be the, the reopening guide, which details out, um, the, the structure of the plan.
Can we, I suggest we label that version, whatever day this is, because it's going to change.
Right, right, yep. Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea, John, so to label that as of the twenty-fourth of August.
There might, building on that, and thank you, John. As you all know, I've, I've sort of talked about what is the plan, you know, is it a specific calendar or is it, you know, something else? And so I think that's helpful to put in a date. And I think it might be helpful to adjust the language a little bit in the resolution, uh, you know, so that it says, you know, the plan similar to or substantially similar to or something like that, just so it gives us a little bit of wiggle room in terms of, um, what exactly that is.
I think three, uh, point three tries to address that as well.
Oh, sorry, I may have missed that.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts or comments?
If there aren't any questions, I'll just add a few comments if I could. So again, I just want to thank the board and our teachers, parents and the community for their ongoing support and flexibility. I, I have to continue to remind everyone that these are ever-changing times. The only thing they seem to know is that things will continue to change. So we continue to be prepared to adjust and pivot with the changing guidance. It continues to be dynamic. So does the transmission data in that data tracking. And as we learned last week, the expectations for quarantining continue to change. So the calendar adjustments that you all approved last week will support our teachers, staff and students, I think, in better acclimating and being prepared for both in-person instruction as well as remote learning. Both are really, really important, especially as we understand the need for quarantining. And ultimately, our hope is that we can sustain in-person learning for as long into the school year as possible. So I recognize that there is some frustration and quite frankly, just some disappointment that we aren't able to jump fully into the full schedule of, of in-person learning right from the start. Our goal is not only to open schools, but to keep them open for as long as possible. And so I think the adjustments that the board approved last week will help us to do so. As of today's update, and I'll just keep updating the board like this at every meeting, as of today's update, we don't have any adjustments to the guidance to report today. Remember last week, we received two critical adjustments to our guidance. The first related to the definition of close contact. That definition now indicates that a close contact is calculated by, based on cumulative minutes. So being in close contact means being within six feet of a COVID positive person for more than fifteen minutes for a cumulative of, I think it's two twenty-four hour periods of forty-eight hours. That makes our bubbling system really, really important. It actually helps to limit that close contact outside of the bubble. But the reality is within each pod, if there is someone who tests positive, it is likely, and we all just need to be prepared, that that pod may need to quarantine for whatever is the recommended length of time. So we have to really pay close attention to that. It really lays the groundwork for the potential of, of more frequent quarantines than what we had originally anticipated. And so again, that, that practice and preparedness for remote learning is so critically important. The second guidance adjustment that came last week was really from our medical field, wherein we learned both from experience and from consultation with our medical professionals, that a COVID negative test alone does not release someone back to work or back to school. If there are symptoms associated with that, in all likelihood, the doctors are going to recommend that that person continue to quarantine even with a COVID negative test for seven to ten days. And so again, it just extends and expands the likelihood of quarantining, um, for individuals within our system. And so we just, again, that planning for remote learning has to be part of what we're doing. Both of those adjustments mean that we should expect and should plan for the possibility of more classroom quarantines than originally anticipated. Again, I'm just emphasizing this because parents need to be aware of this, staff and teachers need to be aware of this, the board needs to be aware of this. We do hope that the additional professional development and training next week for teachers and staff, as well as the additional practice for students and families with remote learning in that first week will really help with that. But we recognize too that it is an additional burden on our families and so we appreciate their flexibility. And as we spoke so much last week, their grace in understanding the need for this. On a final note, and then I see some hands. We've heard some rumors over the weekend that there's going to be an additional update from IDPH coming out. They could just be rumors, who knows? They could be coming to fruition, I really don't know. But as we've done in the past, if there are new guidance, we will fold it into our plans and adjust accordingly. Again, I think we're very prepared to make those adjustments, but I need to continue to emphasize to everyone. If there's one thing we know, it is that change in this situation right now is inevitable. And we just, we need to be prepared to make those adjustments as, as they happen. So we'll continue to be vigilant and incorporate any new guidance into our plans as, as it's released. And I see many hands up, Mark. Can you see them or would you like me to...
I can't see them, why don't you call on people, Carrie? Thank you.
I'll hand up.
Any suggestions or discussions about what schools, or I should say, short and core assumptions about what schools, what they see schools doing and close season habits? Because about how, I mean, how to distinguish between a COVID symptom and a close symptom?
Yeah, so previously, right, so, so previously it was either a medical professional assesses the symptom and says that there's another medical reason for it, such as an allergy, and then that individual can return to school. Or a COVID negative test wouldn't allow that person to return to school. Now they're saying if there's a, a different medical explanation, that individual can return to school. But if there's not, even with a COVID negative test, that person will likely need to quarantine. So playing that out, if someone might have the flu, if they can get a medical diagnosis of that other flu, meaning that's a different medical reason, explanation for say the fever, that person wants fever subsides and symptoms subsides, can come back to school or work. If there isn't another medical explanation, that person is going to need to quarantine for whatever the doctor says, which is likely to be seven to ten days, even with a COVID negative.
Doctors will still be able to assess whether it's a clinical condition or not?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're told. But if they can't assess that, then it reverts to the seven to ten day quarantine period until we know for sure. Yeah, so again, that increased likelihood of, of quarantining across our stakeholders. John?
Does it make sense in the resolution to put the overriding goals, staying in person?
Yeah, that's what I was going to...
That's what I figured, okay, that's what you're going to do, the flowery.
And our commitment to safety first and all that, yeah. Erin, go for it.
Yes, um, I just want to thank everybody for all the work you have done and give a, a future thanks for all the work that's going to be done. Because obviously, as you said, this is going to keep changing, it's going to keep requiring that level of work. And I mean, what a school district does in normal times, I think, is noble and important because it's for kids. And I feel like it's like additionally so now under COVID. So I just want to thank you for all the work you've done and all the work you will do and keep it up. And know that what you're doing is so important.
Good job, Ann.
Thank you. All right, Mark has his hand up.
Yeah, I have a, I guess a comment and a question. So in the, in the sort of purpose language, as you guys know, I'm always a fan of the, of, posing the goal as striking the right balance between, uh, in-person and, and, you know, enhanced safety, as opposed to a specific goal of, of one or the other. The, so I'll just put that out there. The other thing is, Carrie, I'll be interested in, there's not, I don't think there's any response that you need to give here, but I'm just putting this out there. As we go through and start looking at the metrics that will help us determine what mode we should be in at any given time, I think it'll be important and interesting to keep in mind our early on goal of providing consistency for the students and the staff, frankly. And with this enhanced possibility of quarantine, um, it, you know, it makes it tough, right? Because what, what you don't, what, what probably isn't helpful or maybe may push our consistency balance too far is if we wind up having classes that are going into quarantine and then coming out for a week and then going in for two weeks and then coming out for a week. So I think it's just going to be that, again, that'll be another place where we all need grace and patience and acceptance of each other. But I think that is one of the pieces that we'll need to go into the way we think about how to determine which mode we should be in. Any other thoughts or questions on this topic? Okay. Then I think we can move on.
Thank you, thanks, everyone. Let's go to old business. Is there any old business that we need to address this morning? Any new business? Okay, then we are going to move to public comment. Um, the district has requested the public comments be emailed to publiccomment@willmet39.org. Tony, have we received any public comments via email?
We have. I'll be reading those, there's about ten. Someone...
Oh, yeah, there's, there's nobody here, so we're going to move to email, thank you.
Board of Education and Superintendent, I have always trusted...
Sorry, Tony, can I just interrupt?
Sure.
Can you read who it's from first?
Sure.
If they've identified themselves so that...
Just in case.
Thank you.
Sure, not a problem. From Heather Hebler, a McKenzie parent, she put, "The Board of Education and Superintendent, I have always trusted our school district until the lack of, of the, a new plan was sprung on us with no notice and not on the agenda for the board meeting. This feels like we, as parents and taxpayers, have no say in the education and planning. Why bother including or, including or surveying us if it doesn't matter to the actual decision-making? The change is unrelated to the fact that, to a fact set that has changed and sets upon the school district, not for success, but rather a lumping, a lumpy start that is confusing for parents and children. There will be nothing that changes in six or nine months, except for that it is flu season. Every business, hospital and private school has to change and innovate. And thus far, it feels like the teachers would rather be going out to lunch with each other, like last week, all together, no masks, not socially distant, than teaching our young children and creating a meaningful connection and learning experience for them. Extremely disappointed and disheartened with our teachers' union, our teachers and our administrators folding versus adhering to the facts and consultants that we've hired. The immediate and triple down effect this decision will have is much more than negative. Then mathematically, the two point, two point three people per school that will get COVID in the next nine months, not feel well for a few days and then return to their life. Families chose Willmet for education, not for disjointed decision-making that is not in the interest of our kids or working families. We can do the original plan safely, why are you unwilling to try?" Michelle Coffey. "I am the parent of a rising seventh grader and two rising second graders at McKenzie. I'm writing to share my confusion, frustration, disappointment and anger at how the board handled the back-to-school plan. I was ready to accept whatever plan the committee put together. I was hopeful that it would allow my twins back in the classroom for as much time as possible. I knew my older daughter would be fine with remote learning, but my younger daughters needed live teacher instruction. Then the plan came out. I felt like the committee did a great job of giving, giving parents options and was really put together with the children in mind. When, then, when the board meeting was called and the parents were asked again, again, to weigh in and voice their thoughts and concerns, I got nervous but was still hopeful. I was under the impression that the meeting had purpose, it didn't. You already revised the plan, you took everything away and took most, the most away from the population that needs to be in school the most. I don't understand. Why are teachers not essential workers? Why is getting a manicure or going to Starbucks more essential than the education of our students? Why are the camp counselors and teachers at the park district more essential than our teachers in our buildings? Why did planning for this school year not start in June for the teachers? Why did a group of teachers, parents and administrators work all summer on coming up with a back-to-school plan for you all to dismiss it? I have not spoken to one parent since your meeting that agrees with change. Most were confused on how and why you made the change. You allowed everyone to be heard, but you didn't really care what anyone had to say. Why in a decision that so deeply affects hundreds of families do the seven of you get to be the final word? Again, I'm so angry and frustrated and disappointed in how you handled everything and confused on why." Jeanine LaCrosse. "I wanted to express my concern with the change of the in-person start with K through eighth grade. I've been very pleased and impressed with the amount of work the school board has put forth with the start of the school year. And then the plan was published a month ago. I'm confused on why the change to a staggered start and why the lower age, and why are the lower age following the high school when it has been, it's been showed scientifically, these age range of kids are drastically different when it comes to the virus. It is also very concerning when you see D thirty-nine teachers at Gilson Beach and other outdoor crowded areas that they are not concerned for their health, but they are concerned for the amazing safe environment that you are providing them. It makes no sense that they can pick and choose when they think it's unsafe, when the beach is not socially distant at all. I think the kids need to start full-time right away for elementary and hybrid, planned, you rolled out earlier. I feel it is the best with most parents versus how they are scrambling now. Thank you for listening to my concerns." Noah Rothschild. "I'm so disheartened that my daughter's first day at kindergarten will be video conference. Are you aware that the positivity rate for COVID testing will met is less than one percent? It is currently point eight percent. What do you consider an acceptable level of risk? What metric are you using for return to the classroom?" Lisa Lang. "I'm deeply concerned, as adults, we need to figure this out. We have an abundant opportunity to utilize safe outdoor learning through the end of September, mid-October. Offering one day per week, though the best out, through the best outdoor weather for safe learning is a mistake. What's the long view? Keep educators and children out of school until proven and safe vaccine is available, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three? How is it local park district camps, travel sports, dentists, restaurants, hospitals, grocery stores and even nail salons have figured out how to manage their businesses and schools have not? Our children deserve the very best efforts and I believe what's happening in our district is unacceptable. My family recently toured a K through twelve district school in Colorado. Their position is how to best address children's developmental learning and, and developmental learning needs in spite of COVID. They have worked since March to ready the school so kids and educators can return to the school, learning safely in three weeks. We already know masks, good hygiene and social distancing dramatically reduce the risk of infection. I'm exhausted by the litany of letters from the district now and the board offering accolades to all who participated in endless discussions with no real solutions. The hand wrangling has got to stop. I strongly believe that kids can safely get back to school and learning this fall. Can we please change the discussion from should we to yes, we can?" Our children should be able to utilize with optimum weather, August through October, to provide safe social connections before the likely lockdown heading into winter." Erin Chastain. "I'm writing to express my disappointment in the revised plan for, from District 39. Although the union has described the revision as a compromise, I'm certain going from full in-person learning elementary to a max of six, to a max of six in-person days over the course of six weeks is far from that. I'm also disappointed in the lack of transparency through this process. The decisions for our districts should be based on data, not on emotion. If you look at the suburban districts across the county with infraction rates as low and similar to Wilmet, they are planning to do substantially more in-person learning right from the start of the school year than we are planning with most, with most recent revisions. Please consider altering the plan and making it a true compromise from the original as opposed to an extreme change. Thank you." Kristin Marvin. "We were very disappointed with the new plan because of the ramp up to full person is so slow and we'll end up wasting three precious resources. The warm weather, which can allow for more opportunity to conduct school activities outdoors, two, the time before flu season starts, and three, being in phase four. It is unlikely we will remain in phase four for long. We need to take advantage of it while we can to help our students connect to their teachers in person. The student-teacher connection will be the foundation upon which successful learning, e-learning depends, and in a week of back-to-school zooms is not the way to establish a student's connections to his or her class, teacher, and school, with the reverse being true as well for teachers. The students do not need to practice being remote before then. We've all had enough experience with this at this point. Nor do we even, uh, the youngest elementary students need much practice with masks and social distancing. Even my four-year-old knows the drill by now, and he's by no means exemplary. While we think it's fair to have the teacher spend a few extra days training and staggering the start a bit, at least let the kids have their first day in the classroom and speed up, speed up the ramp up, three weeks of Zoom to start for elementary with just 1.5 days in person goes beyond being prudent and seems more like a bait and switch. Utilizing the warm weather and low positivity rate in Wilmet today will keep both our teachers and students safer while bringing, while building a foundation to carry us through what is likely going to be a difficult fall and winter. Please consider greatly accelerating the planned timetable for in-person learning. Thank you." Alexa Burnell. "I'm writing to share my thoughts on the revised D39 plan. While I understand that the task of figuring out this upcoming school year is incredibly challenging, I'm disappointed with how the decision has been handled. For months, the district has been asked for parent insight and opinion. I've sat in on every webinar and gave my opinion. When the original plan was introduced a few weeks ago, I was impressed with how the community's input had been taken into consideration and the care and details that went into keeping teachers and students safe. While I expected some modifications could occur, I figured those changes would be driven by the state changing faces. Nothing, however, has prepared me for what occurred last Thursday night. The complete lack of preparation taken by the board to ensure that the community, at the very least, could hear the meeting was a true slap in the face. There's no excuse for such terrible communications, particularly when proposing the remote learning will be the main method of educating this fall and possibly the entire year. The change in the 2020-21 school reopening plan was handled by the poorest way possible. I've always loved this district, but I feel nothing but a deep sense of disappointment now. The meeting basically showed me that all the time taken to gather community input was a waste of time and our opinion doesn't really matter. Beyond that, you teach our children to have grit, resilience, and perseverance. All that I see is the school district teaching our children to hide until it's safe to come out. I'm not suggesting we stick them all back in school, no masks, no rules, and hope for the best, but how about using this unfortunate COVID situation as a life lesson on how to get through a difficult time? While I won't elaborate all my ideas because I fear that will fall on deaf ears, I should, I would suggest taking a look at how the park district operated this past summer. Outdoor camps have been held since June. Many were full day. Kids wore masks, washed their hands, stayed physically distant, and that one diagnosis occurred. If we wait until late September, October to begin hybrid, our opportunity will be missed. Use the start of the school year to come up with a more creative outdoor plan, allowing kids to transition from summer schedules to learning mode, meet their teachers, and build relationships, commitment to their classes. The colder weather will likely present more challenges and in the, if the children have not had the chance in the beginning of the year to build those connections, it only makes sense. It only make, it will only make it much more difficult to keep them motivated and engaged for the entire school year." Stephanie Foster. "Dear Wilmet School District 39 Board, I'm just learning of another committee of the whole meeting for tomorrow, 8:00 AM with an agenda item VA, or no, agenda number five, reopening plan update. I would first like to express my concern about the communication for these important special and committee of the whole meetings. While I'm sure you're, you are meeting legal obligations for notice requirements, why are you not posting on every platform available? There has been no update to your Twitter, Instagram, Facebook pages since June 9th, 2020. These are current and applicable platforms to publicize and inform the district about these meetings. As a former elected official, I am well aware of the constant criticism of transparency and it often feels unfair. Please do a better job to inform us when the meetings pop up and use social media to your advantage. Along the lines transparency, please explain this meeting. Don't just read my email and public comments. I believe board members are allowed to address public comments. Why you spent hours on public comments in the last meeting, but you had already decided on and negotiated a new reopening plan? How does it serve the board when it comes to transparency? I'm hoping there are, there, there is a misunderstanding on the order of how that all played out. Do not ask for input on citizens, from citizens, taxpayers, if you already negotiated an outcome with the WEA. Concerning the compromise with the WEA, our children were set to start on August 26th with five days per week of in-person learning if families chose to do so. We are now faced with six total of in-person learning for the first original 27 days of school. That is not a compromise. That's a steamroll on in-person learning. I truly appreciate all your service to our community. I realize the hours and intensity that goes into these roles. I do not take that commitment lightly. You have been faced with a very difficult decision and situation. The feedback from the community is clear. The stats in our community are clear. There are options for parent, for those who are not comfortable with in-person learning. Please reconsider this compromise and provide significantly more in-person learning days for the first weeks of school. Thank you again for your dedication to our community." Last one. Dan Johnston. Or Johnson. "To the Board of Education, thanks for your volunteer service in navigating what meet, what most, what must be the most challenging spring and summer of planning in District 39's history. Last night, my wife and I put up a petition to see whether residents, residents share our view that the modified calendar passed in, on August 13th is a significant step backwards. In less than 12 hours, 85 residents have signed the petition. The signatories are attached, some with supportive and compelling comments in PDF and Excel format, that the text of the petitions is in this email. We will continue to share the petition as more residents sign. Give the reaction overnight. Given the reaction overnight, I'm confident there will be many more signatories over the coming days. Please reverse the decision to modify the calendar and return to daily in-person learning as originally proposed at the next board meeting. This is a petition to the seven members of the Wilmet 39 School Board, our neighbors who serve as volunteer elected representatives. After a month of, of work, oh, these are some of the comments. After months of work, a District 39 Planning Committee of more than 100 stakeholders presented a thoughtful, excellent, and most importantly, safe plan on July 30th. They called for daily in-person instruction for K through 4 students. On Thursday, August 13th, with very little public notice, the board unanimously voted to change the school calendar for the fall, cutting in-person learning by more than 75% until the first week of October for K4 students. The undersigned respectively request the board, our elected neighbors, to return to the original camera, calendar with daily in-person instruction for K4. The plan presented on July 30th was consistent with D39 standards based on science and educational needs. It also shows our school leadership valued in-person learning for our youngest students, the ones who disproportionately fail at remote learning. We are confident in our, in the capacity of our excellent staff to implement a safe learning environment. In-person learning in August and September will be safest given low COVID-19 positivity rates in Wilmet. Establishing a relationship with teachers is so impactful for young learners, particularly for any potential later transition to remote learning. Let's start out our academic year off strong with the original calendar for in-person learning and maximize in-person learning while we can. We are a community of excellence. Let's all rise together during, in these challenging times to put educational needs of these young learners first. Safety is at the center of the July 30th plan, so let's feel confident and supported that our excellent staff and leadership can implement this plan. Wilmet can do this safely on time. The petition will be submitted to the board with updated signatories. All information, including previous board meetings, is available at wilmet39.org." That's it.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to address a few points before we move to executive session. Um, so I understand that many people were frustrated by both the audio and the order of things on Thursday night. And so I just want to state that the audio, we apologize for that. There was a decision made to move to the junior high so that we would allow as many people as possible to attend in person. And um, again, we apologize for the poor audio. I think there was a obviously unexpected, an undesirable outcome, but all public comments are going to be put online. All the materials from the meeting will be online, and our next meeting will be back here at the MEK, and we don't expect any audio problems. In terms of, another point of clarification is whether or not there's a new plan. There's not a new plan. The plan is the same plan that was created and rolled out in July. We modified the calendar, and I understand that, that that is not, um, those changes are not accepted by all, but we are trying to balance many factors. This is also not the first time that the plan will be modified based on changing conditions on the ground. So again, kind of, we ask for your grace and we ask that, that folks in the community understand that we're trying to balance many things and that everybody sees the change. Um, is a bad thing, right? So I just wanted to put a couple of those clarifications on the table. No new plan, better audio, everything's gonna be online. Are there any other points of clarification the board wants to make?
I just wanted to ask if, um,
Um, sure.
Could, could you repeat Ellen's question, or Ellen, could you speak up?
Point of clarification about, um, whether it's business. Whether I can bring up new business. I'm just asking for clarification first. On protocol. But it has to do with communications. And clarity and being, um, a lot of people that we've heard from wanting us to be more transparent or thinking that we're not being transparent. And, um, you know, we've had lots of conversation about how we can do better, and I just want, you know, to be very clear that the desire to be completely transparent throughout this whole process, I know the desire has been there from day one, and the intent has been there through day one. Um, my question is, at any point, are we going to discuss the circumstances surrounding like how, how overwhelmed and how difficult, you know, that there's, you know, we don't have all pieces in place for person to handle that. Just a puzzle, get information out, and as time went on, like, can we discuss that?
So yeah, so just on the board notes, we brought in some support for communications last week. And we'll be putting together a strategy and a plan for moving forward on how to revise and modify our communication.
So.
So we have a consultant that we brought on board while we're, while we're still hiring. I, I'm not.
Saying we haven't talked about that, that there wasn't someone in the place to provide that so there.
Right, so I think that Ellen, what you're saying is we haven't had a communications person, and having one in place might have helped with some of the communication.
So, is that okay? Is that okay? Do you want to? Is that okay? Because I feel that that would clear up a lot. I, I just feel that, that they just mentioned. I just wanted to say that the work that you guys have been doing is, is nothing short of remarkable, and it's very difficult to do a full-time job. To do your full-time job and do another full-time job at the same time. It's just not feasible. Particularly during this time of COVID, when the job is just, it, it's just three times as much for all of our administration and the people that worked on this plan. Um, during that time, unfortunately, you did not have the warm body, the person who was, who would be handling that communications aspect specifically to be able to, to give that extra, that extra like self from, from, you know, what was happening here and then the daily communications out. And, um, it was recognized, but things have been moving so quickly. And it was more important, my perception of this, and you can totally correct me if I'm wrong, please, but my perception of this has been that things had to get done, and the priority was, is, is getting, is getting the plan done, working through all these changes that happen every day, with them coming at you at 100 miles an hour from ISB and from CDC and from the, on medical boards, and then also working through with the complexities of working with unions and teachers and everyone to make. And the 100 people that were on the planning committee and the input of our community, which is so important to us, to you, and has been taken into account. It's very important to us. But then the problem was getting it back out to people that, expressing to them that, yes, we have been listening, we've been taking that into account. That piece of it was just not there because there wasn't a person who was able to communicate that. It was just, there wasn't the person with the job. Um, our communications director was not here. There wasn't a person. There now is. There's now going to be a person. It's just we didn't have that person. And I just think it's really important. I think a lot of people weren't aware of that. And, um, it's just, you know, it was an unfortunate timing of, you know, that. But I think it's just absolutely crucial for people in the community to understand that that was missing. And so, yes, um, we admit that the communications has not been as it should have been, and that is so unfortunate. But the, um, but our intent has always been to be completely transparent and really try to communicate as best we can. And I think, given that, you know, I think Carrie, you sent out communications that were just mind-boggling, given the, on top of the work that you've done. It's really remarkable that you were able to even get those communications out at times. So that's all I wanted to say. To acknowledge that, because I think a lot of the community did not know that.
Done?
Yeah, I, I, I've been thinking about that hearing a lot since, like, Thursday. And my understanding was that, that we set up that hearing right before we had the final modification and had put the agenda out, and the agenda is the agenda and it can't be changed. And that's why that hearing went the way it did, where there were comments before the plan came out, and it, and it was a really unfortunate series of timing issues.
I think part of it is we have a practice that we do public comment before, and you want public comment before you vote on an item?
Right.
And then people wanted a public comment after, so. So I, I think that we were in a catch twenty-two. And then people should have a say. It, it, there were, there were multiple challenges, including a challenge that discussions were going on and notifications were being made same day.
Right.
So I, I think that one of the messages took a couple of messages. The first is, this is a really challenging time. Things aren't going to go the way that they should sometimes or the way we wish them to go. That everyone is working as hard and as fast as they can. In terms of communication, could we do better? Yes, but the truth is that we have been sending extensive emails. There are countless documents on the line. Some people, when you listen to the comments, say too much information, too many emails, too much stuff to wait through. Others say not enough, not transparent. So we understand that people have differing needs for both communication and differing needs about when it's time to have a say. And so we did bring on extra support last week to talk with us and help us figure out what are the different modalities we can use? And what are the different ways we can communicate the same information we've been trying to get out? So I, I do want to explain to the community that the information, decisions that have been made is all on the website and there are lengthy emails and there will be other ways that we will be communicating with you moving forward. I know other people had their hands up though. Did other people have, are we good?
I didn't answer that one question about the Twitter and the Facebook and why has that been quiet since June?
We won't, we will, all this will be addressed moving forward, but the most, the most important thing is to figure out how we are going to safely open schools.
Exactly.
And so when folks get frustrated that things aren't going according to plan, understand that that is the priority of the administration and the staff. Figuring out how to open our schools safely is no small feat. And I just want to point out to everyone in the community that we're not just opening up schools normally. We're not, but we're also opening up schools on two tracks. In-person, hybrid and remote. And that is a significant piece of work. So I know that folks want their class assignments ahead of time. They want really good communication. They want safety protocols and they want good remote learning. So do we, which is why kind of the team has their head down and are focused on all those things. And it's not a deliberate lack of transparency. It is just, there is too much to do. And that priorities have been made and there are some consequences from that priority. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to move to executive session.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss negotiations in person.
May I have a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call it?
Nancy's ready?
Yes.
Frank, Nancy's?
Yes.
Maybe, yes, Mark's team?
Yes.
I want to start one on my, yes. Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Is it try to face?
Yes. Great. We're going to move to executive session.
All right.